And then we'll remain standing for the religious.
Father God, the Son and Holy Spirit, I stand in a posture with open hands, ready to receive your blessings. As we enter the season of Thanksgiving, we are reminded that we are a nation that has been blessed beyond measure. And enduring this season, as we gather around our table, let us not be remiss as to the fact that there has been tragedies here and abroad. At the times, this world is dark, but I serve a God that only creates good things, but has the power and authority to use evil for his own purpose and will. I pray for Israel. Father God, you are the rock and redeemer of Israel. I pray for peace and healing there and here. I pray for the enemies that only wish and desire for her destruction. I pray that their hearts and minds be changed, not by man, but by your power and your authority and your will, so that they would want to live in peace. I pray that those who have not gathered around your table, Father, that they will change their hearts and their understanding that they need a Savior, a God that created this world for good and a son, Jesus Christ, to walk the earth as a sacrifice for the world, and the Holy Spirit to live inside all of us to show the power of your love and your grace. This world has joy, but joy is fleeting. But you, God, give us hope, and hope is eternal. You give us a blessed assurance that you will complete what you have begun. And I pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Would you just indulge? I had the privilege of going to the dedication ceremony for Habitat House this past week. President Carter and First Lady Rosalind Carter have devoted their life since presidency to Habitat, have done a lot of good for the country. So if you'd just take a moment of silence in respect for Mrs. Carter. Thank you very much.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and do a roll call vote. I think we've got some online as well, so thanks for joining us.
Pollers?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Hensley?
Present.
Lester? Mealy?
Here.
Schwartz?
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Wiseman?
Wright?
Here.
Yellicorn?
All right, good item three, adoption of the agenda. And I know we've got a couple proposed changes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose changes with moving under bills pending 2023-53, which is item D on the list, to move it up to item A. And also under resolutions, moving RS 2023-33 from item C on that to item A.
All right, you have the agenda before you. There's two proposed changes. Any discussion on the amended agenda? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. No miscellaneous agenda items. Public hearing to this time. If Congress party mayor, you have one name in front of you for environmental quality commission.
Make a recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very much announcements by mayor, council and staff. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jumping ahead, something. Good item seven A, we, why? High Street Viaduct presentation, Mr. Kemp, that's how you said it back there. You can just announce yourself and thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here to talk a little bit about the High Street Viaduct and some options that we've been looking at to date. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has on this. So we have five options that we can walk through real quickly here. There's some things to know about them that we did try to keep. This is very ballpark, big picture, just trying to understand in general a big picture concept to move forward with. There are some things we've tried to keep similar between the options. You will see that there's a culvert. Anyway, there's a culvert that we're showing just north of the viaduct there where Missouri Boulevard crosses Weir's Creek. That's shown in all the options. Some of this kind of stuff like that isn't necessarily required in all the options, but that is an aging structure that some of them require replacements. And working with city staff, we wanted to create an apples to apples and have one have one punished by, hey, it's getting the replacement of this aging structure and others aren't. You'll also see as we go through, there's some different intersections that we're showing, we're pointing in. We show a roundabout for all of those intersections. There are other intersection types we could definitely consider, but we didn't want to make this a roundabout versus a stop control versus a signal discussion. We wanted to make this a, what's the right bridge type? And then we can come back and discuss the different intersections and things like that. So just some big picture things to be aware of. And then this is also what I'll call, if you've looked at building a house or something, you probably initially start with a per square foot estimate, and then you get down to actually looking at material estimates. We're kind of at that per square foot estimate. It's ballpark to just try and understand, hey, order of magnitude on these. And then the next step is, once we get some concurrence around this is the option to move forward with, we will dig into that further, refine that, refine the option, develop a more detailed cost estimate, and then go look at grant funding or however we could possibly fund this bridge, because we know this is going to be a very expensive structure for the city. So let's walk through the options real quickly. Option one, that's shown on the screen right now. The, this option is essentially replace the bridge with what is there. We are shortening up the bridge a little bit. If you look at, if you're driving Missouri Boulevard towards the river, so headed north, and you look, there's kind of some space off to the right that we can shorten that bridge up. And so that's what we're showing here, but in the end, it's going back where it's still a bridge that crosses the railroad, Weir's Creek and Missouri Boulevard. Also leaves on the right side of the screen, the side there, the kind of slip lane configuration. It's a pretty odd configuration now, but we haven't necessarily seen a lot of accidents or issues with it. So this option essentially leaves that in place. Sorry, how many batteries are a little slow?
Do you want to go back or forward?
Forward. There we go.
Can you move forward one screen?
Go to option two, please. There we go. So this option essentially puts in an intersection. As I said, we show this in the next few options. So right now, if you drive this area, Missouri Boulevard goes under the High Street Viaduct. This option says, well, what if we had an intersection there? We actually raise Missouri Boulevard up about seven to eight feet in elevation, and then we lower the High Street Viaduct, the remaining portion. That, we don't want to take High Street all the way down to existing Missouri Boulevard grade, partly because it's already fairly steep, and that would create it to be extremely steep. The other reason is, we hear one of the great things about the viaduct is everybody thinks back to like the 93 flood, and hey, it was the way across town, you know, it connected downtown to the west side. We set that elevation of that roundabout partly to keep that at that same hundred-year flood elevation or a large flood. So High Street would still lower, but it would still be above that major flood elevation. As I said, we show a roundabout here. We could consider other intersection types. We do think roundabout has some strength to it, but I'm going to not get too much into that debate unless you all want to discuss that tonight. We could consider other things there. Then the bridge itself, we are showing that we essentially shortened that bridge to be on the other side of the intersection. Currently, again, Missouri Boulevard goes under, and the bridge starts just off to the right as you're headed north. This would have, hey, you get to the intersection and look just off to the left and the bridge starts. This is as long a bridge as we could put in without getting into the intersection itself, which we definitely don't want the bridge inside the intersection. The last thing to point out is that there is a box culvert shown just south of that roundabout. If you can kind of see, there's a culvert there and it shows pedestrian tunnel. That's an optional thing, but it is something that we think is a strength to some of these options that if you go out there in the morning or evening rush hours, you probably see a lot of people jumping across Missouri Boulevard, going between those parking lots. By raising Missouri Boulevard up by about seven to eight feet, we can actually stick a culvert underneath. It essentially becomes a tunnel and allows people to cross from one parking lot to the others. Okay. Option three, pretty similar to option two. The main difference, you know, the intersection, the pedestrian tunnel, all that's the same. The only difference between this is if you look at the bridge itself, we've shortened the bridge. We shortened the bridge to where the last option, the bridge kind of, or the creek cuts at a 45-degree angle under the bridge and kind of goes through some of those intermediate bends. This one says, well, what if we square up that stream? And we have to realign the stream then, which is an issue. We're going to have to work with the Corps of Engineers to look at what realigning the stream might cost, what impacts it might have to it. But this would shorten that bridge up even further. Off the top of my head, I believe that's a 230-foot-long bridge and the last one was 410. So that's the kind of, we're cutting the bridge almost in half when we do this. The last estimate was about 11.3 million. This one's about 10.8. So you can see, we do show some savings by shortening that bridge up. Okay, the fourth option is essentially, you can see a trend. We started with long bridge and we're shortening the bridge up. This is, this is the absolute shortest we can make the bridge, because we do have to cross the railroad. Other than trying to work with the railroad, to not have a railroad there, there's no way, no way to handle that. So this is as short as we can get it, where the bridge is only crossing the railroad. So then what do you do with the stream? We've stuck the entire stream in a box culvert. That same box culvert that was just crossing Missouri Boulevard, we extended it all the way, so it also crosses High Street. We thought, hey, this is an option that does have some long-term benefit. It is much more cost-effective to maintain a box culvert. It might last 100 years versus 75 for the bridge. However, this does have the highest cost, so probably not overly desired. About $13 million option here. Okay, the very last one that I'm going to talk about tonight is, people ask, this is an expensive structure. It carries about 2,000 cars a day, so it is a very valid structure in the city, but what if we actually just removed it? So we put this option together to show what that would look like. Essentially, we create a cul-de-sac up by the fire station, and then we are showing, again, still a roundabout. Be a broken record. We could consider all kinds of intersection types right there, but just to create an apples-to-apples comparison, we show a roundabout where Missouri Boulevard and High Street meet. The big thing that people, we wanted to make sure, talking to the city, that we include in this option is the work up on the high, the north part, the top of the screen there on Main Street. As I said, High Street in those larger floods is that flood route. We, this says, what if we put Main Street as that flood route? So essentially, we are raising Main Street and I'll call it the three to four-foot neighborhood, replacing the bridge, that Main Street across Weir's Creek. It's a little tight. You imagine, you go out to, I'll call it the red wheel bike shop, middle bottom area, and imagine Main Street going up three to four feet. Putting the street at the window elevations. It can be done, but it is tight through that area, so there is some downside there. But essentially, what that option would end up looking like. You can see it's a $7.3 million price tag that that's, there is a fair amount of cost in demoing the bridge itself and then building what you see on the screen there. That is all I have for options. Again, the next steps we are seeing. So recommendations, we're thinking option two, three. So that's basically build some type of roundabout or some type of intersection at High Street and Main Street. What I took away from this study is, we can actually get an intersection there, which is, as Matt said, and creates additional movements that aren't there today. And we can do that and still save cost over replacing the bridge at its current length. So we can get an intersection there and save costs. Not put the bridge back at all and save even more cost if you want to. But if you want the bridge still there, option two or three were basically the low-cost options. And essentially, you could then get to, it's just how long is that bridge? You have the 410-foot version, you have the 230. I've been saying, we've been talking to the city, there's probably some option in the middle that's probably the most economical, and that gives us our boundaries. We can play within that, call it option two and a half, you know, something in that range. We'll work with the Corps of Engineers to refine that. But that's our next step, assuming you all agree, or after we get your feedback, find an option, come up with a more refined cost estimate. And we're also looking at starting, starting to evaluate different grants that would fit this project. Any questions?
Structurally sound is the old bridge yet? As far as rehabbing and all that. You see a lot of rebar exposed to that. Is it structurally still sounding up for?
Yeah, so we did, so this study was solely focused on replacements. We've done multiple studies in the last 10, 12 years on this bridge. One about 12 years ago, and then one a couple of years ago when a hole was created in the bridge. It is not, it's not in danger of being a structural issue today, driving over it, no issues. I want to be clear about that. We're not concerned there. However, we do, our analysis has shown it has passed its usable life as far as rehabbing it. Essentially, you're going to, it's going to cost more to rehab it, and you're still left with an old bridge than, you know, what is cost-effective to try and replace it, you know? Maybe you save a little bit, but you're still left with an old bridge that you're, we didn't see good value in lifecycle cost of rehabbing it at this point.
Councilman Lester.
On option three, realigning the stream. So whose cost is that? Is that?
So the, so there's two costs in realigning the stream. One is just the construction cost of actually physically going in and grading it. We show some retaining walls and such. There's also a mitigation cost that you could hit. Basically, the Corps will allow you to affect a certain amount of stream, and then once you get over that, they charge you mitigation costs. We have in that $10.8 million, that, sorry, that would be a cost to the city or to the owner of the project to, if that option was chosen to move forward with. We did put an estimate, I think the detailed estimates are actually out on the website, but we do have a plug number for that mitigation cost. Now, I will say that until we work with the Corps, I've seen those costs vary greatly. So that's one of our next steps is, if that's a reasonable number, that might be a good option. But if they try and go much higher than that, we might need to think about other options.
And also, that would take the stream a little bit closer to the track.
Correct.
I would expect they wouldn't be happy with that.
It's definitely a possibility. It also pushes it closer to the, you can see on the north side, the parking lot. We end up losing some spaces in the state parking lot there.
Councilman Miller.
I might have missed this, but options two and three, that weird turn where you get on, I guess from Missouri Boulevard there, and you're facing the Truman Building. You have to do kind of a 180 to turn around and look behind you.
Yes.
Right there. Do options two and three both remove that turn?
Correct. Yep. Option one keeps what I call kind of that slip ramp weird turn area, and then options two and three completely get rid of that.
We need a motion.
Well, we, we've got resolution 2023-32. We talked in a pre-meeting about moving it up and going ahead and addressing that resolution. Are you comfortable with addressing that? And yes, if so, then yeah, we'll need a motion.
A motion that we make a recommendation of resolution 2023-32.
Second.
We've got a motion. The motion has to go ahead and proceed.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to apply for grants related to High Street Viaduct reconstruction projects.
Councilman Spencer's motion, Councilman Miller's second. Enough further discussion, need a roll call vote.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. All right, Edman, it's the woman, Wise, when it's not here. Thanks for the presentation. Finance, Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, thanks. No update, and we will not be having our normally scheduled monthly meeting this Thursday morning. So I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Public safety, Councilman Spicer?
Thursday, November 30th, Police Training Room, 7:30.
All right, Public Works and Planning.
Our next meeting will be December 14th at 7:30, Council Chamber.
All right, any other announcements? Did want to just remind people that on Saturday, 1 o'clock, little event going on down at Atkins Stadium. So if you don't have anything to do, you may want to go down and watch the Jays whip up on Carney. That's my only announcement. Item B, wastewater. Mr. Marash?
Yeah, I just wanted to make people aware that we're doing some work at the wastewater plant, and it's going to be a little stinky for a couple of weeks. Going to the first couple of weeks of December, basically cleaning out some of the basins and the wind is right, etc., it could drift over into the city, but we put out press releases, etc. But want to make sure everybody comfined with that.
You got high-pressure fans blowing it to the north.
Exactly.
It flowed away from the stadium.
It's already started, so if you hadn't noticed, maybe you won't notice.
The rain probably helps.
Yeah, it does help. That's kind of weather helps, actually.
All right, any comments, questions? Item C, Campo Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Ms. Williams, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Katrina Williams. I'm a planner within the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So you have a press release that's in your packet, and you should have received this via email, but trying to touch base with all of our Campo jurisdictions about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan update. We do this every five years. It's federally required, covers a 20-year planning horizon, and it covers all modes of transportation. We have a public survey that's out currently. It's out on social media. I have some cards that I put at your spots that I hope you'll take the survey and maybe share this with others. There's some extra cards if you're too. We have some public meetings scheduled. One is in this room, December 5th, from 3:30 to 6:30. The other one is December 12th, from 3:30 to 6:00, in Holt Summit at their municipal building. There's a lot of information on our website if you want to find out more information about the plan. There is a draft illustrative list that I've put up on the website, too, that's been vetted by our technical committee. That'll be going to our board in December for them to look at that. It's a pretty comprehensive list with all modes covered, including our active transportation plan list. We do have a draft of our active transportation plan on our website currently, if anyone wants to go look at that. That kind of calculates up into our Metropolitan Transportation Plan as well. We'll probably open a public comment period on that, well, later in December is what we're hoping, so. But it's available if anybody wants to go out and look at it. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions. Councilman Miller, thanks.
Just really quickly, when is your survey end?
January 1st. I didn't really put it down there.
All right, thanks. Seeing no presentations under item nine, takes us to item 10, Consent Agenda.
Would you approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 11, 11A, 2023-055.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2023-2024 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Wastewater Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clark indicated, this would supplement our wastewater budget. It's to purchase a sledge truck vehicle that operates in fields mainly. It's a large piece of equipment. We've had a couple of years trying to get this vehicle, so we're keep, re-appropriating the money to get it, and we believe it should be ready by the spring finally.
Councilman Spencer?
Mr. Marash, would there be any advantage to suspend the rules tonight on that item, to go ahead and proceed?
I don't know there's any advantage, but it wouldn't hurt anything either, so unless you want to leave it on the dock.
I make a motion, we go ahead and suspend the rules to go ahead and proceed with the purchase of this equipment.
I'll second.
You don't, is there any opposition to suspending the rules? Want to go ahead and read it again?
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2023-2024 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Wastewater Enterprise Fund.
All right, seeing the comments, you have 2023-055 in front of you, so the vote will be on that, a roll call vote.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
They'll pass those.
All right, thank you. Item B, 2023-056.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, modifying and amending various fines and fees related to parking.
Marash?
Yeah, thank you. As with, parking's been in the forefront of what we've been doing as of late, purchasing property later on the agenda, etc. We've been looking at the fees. They haven't been raised since 2005 for apartment fees, fines, etc. And so this, this bill would modify those to, we believe, affect about a 10% revenue increase. Again, not been modified since 2005, so kind of a step to get us back towards the market that we were in back in those days. Probably a long, multi-year project to do that, but this would kind of get us on our way. So if you look at the packet, there's a whole list of charts for all the various parking lots and streets that are assigned, so they're all listed there, very numerous. We have parking bag fees, we have all kinds of things in here, but, but the goal is to get about a 10% revenue increase to get us trying to inch back towards the market rate.
Questions or comments? I know Public Works has taken a look at this, Councilman Lester.
These are, the intention is for these to become effective January?
Well, there will be some period of time. We'll have to work with finance over here. I would expect probably the February cycle, really, time we, time we get some of the notices out and things like that. I know it's a big load on them to change the bills, etc. So I would say by about February, these would be implemented.
Councilman Miller?
Did we do a public hearing for this?
Well, this would be the, that's what I would call this, is the notice and notice to the public. We also talked about it at Public Works and Planning Committee. It's not a hearing, per se, but it is on the agenda.
So the notice to the public would be 11B, modifying and amending various fines and fees related to parking. Correct. But without knowing what those are.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to get into all the, I mean, there's a laundry list up in there if you want to go through them.
One question. Matt, how soon before we get a lot more of the app-regulated parking meters and all that are doing away with that? I mean, didn't we start last year before?
Right now.
Capitals?
Well, right now, you can use the app to pay for any of your metered spaces or use the meter. Probably a next step would be to move towards a fully, full app payment, uh, instead of meters, there is a cost to maintain the meters. Uh, that would also allow us to streamline the process in our parking lots, uh, where people can pay online and reserve their space online. Takes a quite a load off of finance, who does all that billing and paperwork. Uh, be a cloud-based system, our, our system would be able to do it. Uh, that's kind of another thing we've talked about at Public Works and Planning Committee, as we do this, uh, there is a cost to that, of course. And uh, getting that and, and equipment, we would need to buy license plates, readers, etcetera. Uh, but it's a different what method uh, of doing that, other cities are going to this rapidly. So uh, we think we should follow suit, and that's kind of the next shoe in this.
Is someone do you foresee bringing this up that, where we could go ahead and start that, because I'm going to imagine saying the finance department, a, just a ton of time?
Yes, we've already talked about it once at Public Works and Planning Committee. There will be a change for folks to have to use the app, but that's, that's if you're parking in most major cities, you might be forced to do that already.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you.
Oh, Ryan, question for you, do we, when we update fees regardless of fee type, do we typically, in this city, um, engage the public in some sort of announcement of a hearing?
I wouldn't say typically, no.
And then was this document that we received, was this on our website for the public to view?
Uh, well, it certainly is through the packet, I don't know how fresh it, you know, forefront it is.
Okay, I think just from my standpoint, I, my preference would be to, to have that public hearing, just to make sure we don't have anybody that this is really going to impact and they don't really receive notice of what's going on here, because again, like you say, it's ten percent, but it's not ten percent per fee, you know? One fee might be going up twenty dollars, but it equates to ten percent coverage to the budget.
Yeah, generally, it is about ten percent for each fee, but uh, some of our, I think the first uh, the lot uh, adjacent uh, to the Jefferson Building on Jefferson Street, that went up, went up a little bit more, we have a very long windows for that facility. And uh, so we, we added a little extra to that, that fee there, but generally, we anticipate about an overall ten percent revenue increase. Which is a little hard to estimate, because you have fines, uh, ticketing, all, etcetera, in there, so it's, it's kind of a uh, you know, the fees are going up about ten percent, but, you know, typically that would translate into about a ten percent revenue, we just have to see what it actually collects.
Sure, yeah, no, you have math exercises here, I would be comfortable in voting yes on this if uh, if it were, you know, presented to the public a little bit more.
Councilman Spencer?
Uh, just real quick, with some of the additional information that, uh, that you had mentioned tonight, um, I think it might be prudent to even say a fifteen percent increase due to the additional equipment that we are eventually going to have to purchase. License readers, uh, uh, technology platform, those kinds of things, so I would, we don't have to do it being this first reading tonight, but um, I would be recommending a fifteen percent increase.
Now, if the next, you mean the next meeting, change of this again, or nothing different?
Uh, or I, or, I make a motion to change it tonight for the next reading, so it would
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think an appropriate motion would be instruct spec, instruct staff to
That's mine, too. Happy couple with that.
Good motion. And a second, any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
On, on the fifteen percent, is that motion?
To bring in amendment.
To amend it to fifteen percent.
And, and the, the motion, just to clarify, is to instruct staff to air an amendment to bring back to the council. So this is a, this is an information seeking exercise.
Okay, aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman? Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
All right, so you'll see a proposed amendment at the next meeting in December.
Yeah, so what will happen is we'll go ahead and modify those cables a little bit, and they won't be a straight, probably a straight shot through it, but we'll you know, work to get to about fifteen percent, that's where, how we do that.
Thank you.
Are you able to put that maybe on the city's website with a
Oh, sure.
flasher up top or something, rates might be changing.
The extent, uh, uh, the uh, yeah, we, I think there's a banner on the front or something like that, that could be, you know, new parking rates or something.
Is it my understanding that part of this is, is so that we, as, as part of the rate increase, we're also updating uh, our software and ability?
We're moving towards that, but that, that does take some time to work with the vendors, etcetera. Uh, which would be a completely another shoe to drop, it wouldn't be just because of this bill went in place. Uh, there'd be, you know, we'd end up removing parking meters, that's kind of a big step. Would probably go away in some form, it, it currently is, and so there, there's a process there that we need to go through, but yeah, we're we're focused ahead that way, I believe.
All right, item twelve, bills pending, remember removing D up to the first item, so we're on twenty twenty-three dash zero five three.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the parking fund.
Discussion.
Yeah, I did have a quick question. Uh, and there may be for you, you're kind of some of our leadership here, are we comfortable with this site being valued at this amount? You know, in the event that you don't do what we intend to do with this site, would, would we be a loss of tax dollars because of this acquisition? Or, or would we be, would it resale it at a comparative price? And if you're not a marketer?
Yeah, so there were, there were two, um, two appraisals, uh, on the site. Their appraisal was a little bit higher, our appraisal was a little bit lower, and so this uh, this amount landed in the middle of that, negotiated setting. Uh, and I will say, we, we are contractually obligated to close, so if this were not approved, we would get sued and we would lose. Um, so what is my, my high suggestion? Uh, still, but, um, as to value, um, this, the, the number was met using third-party objective information, and it stands, so, um, you know, like you said, I'm not a market expert, but uh, certainly two parties that came to a agreement on a purchase plan, even one of them. Uh, so that is kind of the definition of good money.
Councilman Wright?
When do we schedule to close on this contract?
The thirtieth.
Uh, November?
Yes.
All right, seeing no other discussion, you have twenty twenty-three dash zero five three in front of you, we'll do a roll call vote.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman? Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, we go back to original A, twenty twenty-three dash zero five zero.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing election dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the twenty twenty-four general municipal election.
Yes, uh, this bill would establish the election date and candidate filing period for April general municipal election. Five positions up to vote, one council member in each ward. Um, the election date uh, is April second, twenty twenty-four, candidate filing opens, um, December fifth, closes December twenty-sixth.
Questions? All right, you have twenty twenty-three dash zero five zero in front of you, roll call vote.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Wiseman? Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero five one.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollar and thirty-five cent land lease agreement with Fisher Grain Farms.
Marash?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, uh, as clerk indicated, this is a contract with Fisher Grain, uh, Farms for airport and wastewater properties, uh, to farm that land, uh, about five hundred acres of property the city owns in those, between those two divisions. Uh, the contract's really for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand plus, uh, per year, but that's a five-year cost, the six twenty-eight. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, roll call vote.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Wiseman? Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Last one in the section, twenty twenty-three dash zero five two.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adjusting the budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by reallocating existing funds within the general fund.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you. In fiscal year twenty-one, when the EDA grant was approved, a million dollars of matching money was transferred from sales tax G Fund forty-five, um, city-county cooperative projects to match the EDA grant. Due to the fact that the EDA grant has been terminated, staff is requesting the authority to reallocate those matching funds to the community revitalization grant. Can you answer any questions?
Questions? All right, you have twenty twenty-three dash zero five two in front of you with a roll call vote.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Wiseman? Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Bill passes.
Takes us item thirteen, informal calendar, twenty twenty-three dash zero four five.
I just, I'm just leaving this on the informal calendar.
All right, no other action, takes us to item fourteen, resolutions, again, remember, we're going to resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator and city clerk to execute an agreement to operate the yard waste drop-off site.
Marash?
Uh, yeah, and there's been a, a possible amendment to this, I don't know if that needs taking up before I explain, but basically, the city's operating the yard, uh, temporary yard waste drop-off site. Uh, four hours on Saturdays and Sundays each, and uh, uh, there was a, some discussion in our Public Works and Planning Committee meeting about maybe getting a contractor to do that work. And so we've sought bids for that, we have the bids, uh, and that's what the, the subject of the amendment would be. And uh, to, to, I guess I can go ahead and explain it, uh, before it's out there, but uh, uh, right now, the resolution indicates twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, not to exceed. Once we receive the bids and to do, do the bids as, uh, for extended days, which would be an extended Saturday, eight hours on Saturday, four hours Sunday, and then maybe an extended day on Wednesday, or an extended day on Wednesday, excuse me, eight hours. Uh, that, that number can be just under thirty-five thousand dollars to do that work through a contractor. Uh, so the option is, uh, we can continue, I think, uh, Mr. Crane, our city administrator, sent out a memo that I sent to him indicating, uh, we could do the full freight with a contractor, roughly just under thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we could leave the site as is and just operate the four hours as we originally discussed on each of those days under city staff and continue those costs, or some hybrid model of the two. And uh, and so the amendment language is actually for the full, the contractor doing the full amount of the work. Uh, of course, we coordinate with the, this person, and then, uh, and how to go about that is in this, uh, language here on your, on your desktop.
All right. Council, Councilman Wright?
So just to clarify, um, this would be only just to operate the site only, it would, they would not be disposing of any of the
There's no disposal in here, it's operation, they would, uh, have a piece of equipment where they can continue to shove the material back, everyone probably realizes this is a fairly, uh, small site, it was meant to be temporary the whole time, uh, so we didn't want to spend a mu, a lot of money, uh, just making large extended roads for off-site, but have something that's work, well, we've been working it with about three people, sometimes four, apparently this past weekend. This would be for them to staff it with three people and a machine. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Well, I just want to thank staff for getting me some numbers today to start with, I don't know what are the most important topics here, but I'll go through them. It looks like it's costing us about a little over two hundred dollars, um, a weekend in personnel services to run the site. So I think that's a, a great value, and that's what we told residents we were going to do with this site, is the city would operate it. Um, and I think that's a, a tremendous value, we don't want to, as a city, say we're going to do something and then three weeks in, you know, throw in the towel and spend thirty-five grand in tax pair of dollars on something, I just, I, I didn't know if it was serious when I first received it, I mean, that's just, that's so, so much money for such a temporary site, this site has like ten more, I guess, ten more days it would be open, now, I went out to the site on Saturday, and then finally went out there on Sunday, and Sunday they said it was great, and I saw, like, a lot of you did the social media, uh, concerns on Saturday, what I saw a lot of was, you know, the site issue. Which a contractor doesn't fix, fix the site issue. The driveway's too short, it should have been, went up, where there's cedar trees up on the hill there, you would have cut two trees down, you could have wrapped that driveway around, and it would have afforded, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty cars there, pickups, depending on trailers, so that would have prevented some of this backup, but at this point, since the site's only operational slightly over a month, I don't think there's a point in spending that money either on the site. Um, I think residents have come to understand what the site is, but I, I don't think a lot of folks on social media are understanding that it's a temporary site. And, you know, I think if you told a lot of these folks, hey, we're getting ready to spend thirty-five grand of your tax dollars on a site that's open a month, to give you a daytime option, they would be like, oh, okay, never mind, don't do that, we'll wait for the, the permit of twenty twenty-four. My final point is, is we have almost, we have only so much money budgeted for this yard waste site. If we're gonna take thirty-five thousand out of that pot right now, that's thirty-five thousand we don't have in twenty-four, so I don't know where this spending comes from, but I'm, I'm absolutely, uh, opposed to spending this kind of money on something that's that temporary.
Councilman Spencer?
I just have a question, how, where did you get your figures of two hundred dollars, it only costs the city two hundred dollars to run it? Sheila, could you address?
So the question that was asked is if I could tell how much money had been spent so far year-to-date. And so I did send an email out, not realizing that that was what this conversation was about. And they're coded to the general ledger account that we have for the yard waste, there were, um, some funds for rock and things like that, and then there was four hundred and I think thirty-five dollars that had been coded to, through personnel, through payroll. And that would have been through August eleventh, so
November. Sorry.
I'm sorry, November eleventh, and so, uh, you know, that may be something that we need to review to make sure that all of Matt's staff has it coded properly, but, um, there could be an issue there, because
That would only pick it up, but probably, uh, we haven't, you know, wouldn't be up to date as, to, as of this weekend and today's date.
Correct, did, those were costs through November eleventh, covered the payroll through November eleventh.
I think that would have covered two weekends of being open, seems a little low, but
Yeah, this seems way low.
Yeah, I don't, I don't
I was
Councilman Spencer? Well, Councilman Spencer has the floor, so let's not get into it. Before I was talking at one time, Councilman Spencer, you asked a question. Did you get an answer?
I, yes, I, I, I just, I, I think your intent of your figures are not accurate with, with, with.
I blame what was provided.
But I don't think your question revealed what the whole context of what you were going to present tonight, which I think puts staff at some disadvantage.
My context was it's a lot cheaper. This is very expensive.
Again, we're gonna get into. Councilman Spencer, you have the floor.
My question has been answered. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett?
And I will review that tomorrow and provide additional information if necessary, just so I can verify with the public works staff that everything is coded properly.
Thank you.
Councilman Allen?
I have just, uh, a, a, a couple of questions. Uh, are there no city staff that are wanting to keep doing this? As discussed previously, are, are you having trouble finding people to want to work on the weekends and maybe extended hours?
Well, I mean, they're, they're doing their job during the week. Certainly, they're, we've tried, we've gotten volunteers to do this thus far. Uh, like I said, we anticipated originally maybe one or two people we were talking about initially. Uh, this weekend, I know we had four one day and I think three the next is what I want to say, uh, just because of the, the amount of people using it. And so it's a little bit more than we anticipated. Uh, one of the costs that aren't re- really reflected well, that the contractor would charge, is, you know, we own the equipment, we own the dump trucks, we own the, the, uh, Bobcat or Backhoe, whatever we have out there that day. Uh, and so some of those costs, you know, a cha- a contractor does charge for those things. We, we haven't put those into our calculation. So it's just, you know, basically material cost and, you know, a little bit of overtime, I believe, uh, is what, is what we're trying to track, but we could certainly try to do a breakdown of that. But again, the site's temporary. We weren't trying to spend, you know, it wasn't meant to be, be all end-all of a permanent contract, that's for sure. But a private contractor has to make, you know, it's fair to, he make a little, uh, profit to do this. He's taken on some risk. He has overhead for insurance, et cetera, and his equipment's going to be up. And he's got to figure out how to get it staffed as well.
Right, I've got Councilman Schwartz, and then we'll get back to you, Councilman Mealy, if, if you had additional comments. And then I'll spell Dr. Councilman Lester, doctor.
Can I make one more point?
Absolutely.
Uh, and then we also, the first couple of weekends, we did have more staff out there, but the, some of those were our exempt supervisors just kind of monitoring the situation and make sure they didn't get paid any overtime. That was just, you know, on them to be there and make sure their staff could get that done and kind of see what the workload was going to be and evaluate. So we're not picking those costs up either. They just get paid straight out.
I think my original question was, are we having trouble finding staff? People that work for the city to man this site is why we're looking at possibly going to a contractor.
Well, the question was, uh.
So that's what I'm, I, I, hopefully I've got at is, are we having trouble getting that? And so we need to really look, because, you know, the hours are what we're, the people are wanting out there in the city to stay longer hours. But are you, as a city staff, having trouble finding guys that are people who want to work the, let's say, an extended period of time, uh, on Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, that's, that was the thing, is, uh, if we're gonna go to a full day, that, that's kind of a different, takes up your whole weekend. Uh, we're trying to keep our own, our normal workload going as well. Uh, another way to look at it, if the council wanted to shift the workload and say, hey, we're not going to fix farm water pipes or whatever those guys would be doing during the week and do it, and do it ourselves, that's a possibility. You just are not going to get that other workload done. So you're just shifting money and resources about. Uh, everything we do costs money as well, so.
I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Councilman Schwartz?
So I think everybody needs to remember the reason why we got here to begin with. Everybody on this council voted no on the court contract. And so that put us back to trying to negotiate with the current vendor, which did not go well. Our constituents asked us to come up with something. We came up with something. Our constituents have now asked us to modify that, which we don't have the manpower to do. And so, um, we have to step outside of the city employees and go to a private contractor, which unfortunately is going to be typically more expensive, although I would argue that to Mr. Marash's point, that, uh, the cost of just personal service doesn't include the cost of fuel and depreciation and everything else that private contractors have to include in a bid. And so this body budgeted a little over sixteen thousand dollars a month, uh, for this, uh, service. Uh, we're gonna get seven weeks at a little less than thirty-five thousand, which is right in line with what the, at least nine of us voted, the budget we voted on. And so to me, the fact that we've had somebody step up, we're listening to our constituents, we're adding a eight-hour time during the week, which they've asked us to do. Then we're gonna be shut down from January seventh until probably May will be a substantial savings of sixteen thousand times five months in, 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 uh, taxpayer money. So I think the taxpayer, we're doing what the taxpayer has asked us to do. We're saving money. And we're accomplishing it all by doing this tonight.
All right, can I point out one more thing? And like I said, we got these as not to exceed costs, and it's for hours. They actually work and have equipment there. So, you know, as most things we do, we try to work with a contractor to, you know, get some economy of scale. Maybe we can do some things to help bring this number down. But we wanted to give you the full number, and if we can get it down, we'll, we'll work to do that.
Councilman Mealy, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think if, uh, you know, the constituents are voicing their concerns, which I kind of pilfered through some social media and stuff, and you've got a couple dozen people asking for something that's going to cost thirty-five grand, it, it seems to me like I've got to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money as a whole in Jefferson City, but, um, I went out to the site again on Saturday. I asked the guys working out there. I feel like that's where you get the good information, is to go talk to the people doing the work. And, you know, they're like, we like this. It's right before the holidays. We're making, you know, time and a half, and this is going to help us out. We just asked them three weeks ago if they would do that, and then we're gonna turn around and say, we don't need you anymore? I mean, I think what needs to be messaged from the city that could have, you know, potentially been done differently is this is temporary. You know, if you have a weekday availability concern, we hear you. We totally understand that. Let us get past this month, this temporary site, save your thirty-five grand, and then we will discuss all of your needs when we open up the permanent site. That's just my perspective.
Councilman Lester?
If I may? If, if I may?
We got Councilman Lester, then I'll get to you, Councilman Deacon.
Thank you. One thing, I'm, I'm really not sure what, what the demand will be going forward. Uh, unfortunately, we don't seem to know from past, uh, contractor. Be, I, you know, I know the weather's getting colder and we're going to the holidays. Uh, I'd be surprised if the demand decreases in these next seven, seven weeks. You know, I know people have, have, uh, asked for, for, uh, more access. I just don't know how many. I know I see a few on social media, uh, but I really don't know. Uh, whatever, you know, whatever the cost actually is, and I, I, I had thought from previous discussions with, uh, with Mr. Marash that it's more like six hundred dollars a week, but whatever it is, it's, it's certainly uh, a lot less than we were, uh, should be spending under, under this, a whole lot less. And it seems to be working, except for, for a few times where it's been really backed up. It seems to be working very well. What we have. So I would have a hard time voting for this, for, for this amount of money unless, like you said, it could be a hybrid. I mean, um, but I'm not sure it, whether, whether the contractor would want to do, uh, just, just one day or something. The other thing, I know in our, our public works and planning meeting, what we were talking about then was, was a half-day during, sometime during the week. Uh, I think it was mentioned on Friday, but it doesn't matter. We were talking about a half-day during the week, um, someday instead of a full day. So I'm just not sure about, about the demand and the actual need for, for doing that much more. And cer- certainly not, not for as much cost unless, unless there is a hybrid and you could give us different, a different cost estimate. Because certainly, like I said, what's, what's working so far seems to be working very well, um, and for very low cost.
Councilman Deacon?
I'm, um, I'm dead set against spending that much money. I'm really surprised that we can't find enough staff offering more money. The biggest problem is Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon. If we would open up both full days, we wouldn't have nearly the backlog that we have. Offer them double time, triple time. My gosh, those guys are more than willing to work. It's, it's almost a classic example of don't let government do something that's so, so incredibly simple. Have a big yard, dump here, dump there. And my other question is, are we chipping the, the branches as they go? We know?
No, it's, it's being piled, piled on-site, and there'll be a disposal cost later.
That could have been easily chipped as you go. There's portable chipper you pulled behind, been doing them for the last thirty years, going to you. All right, what a mess. All right, but I, I'm dead set against spending that much thirty-five thousand. We might as well, we're gonna give seventeen thousand a month, that's two months. I mean, we'll shoot ourselves in the foot. Open them up Saturday and Sunday afternoons, give the guys some money for Christmas, not be so stingy with this, and, um, just use common sense with it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you very much. Uh, just a quick question. Um, whether we go the contractor route or we stay with city employees operating the site, is there anything we can do on the site to modify it, to, uh, reduce the, uh, the backlog, uh, in that roundabout there?
Mr. Marash or Mr. Smoke?
Yeah, we could certainly, you know, do a lot of things to the site, its equipment and, and move things around. I think the backup occurred, the main backup that I'm understanding was, uh, you know, seven-thirty in the morning to eight, when it get, was getting open and, yeah, weeks pa- weekends passed. Uh, different people were there, you know, we're always changing personnel, but, uh, it got, the gate got open a little quicker and people started coming in. And probably have trained some people, maybe, uh, they could wait, and so people started waiting in the, you know, waiting in the street before it was opened right at eight, uh, that day. Uh, there were o- other small backups certainly through the day, but we, those cleared pretty quick, is my understanding, is the feedback I'm getting. Uh, so, uh, certainly we would, uh, look at smoothing that process out a little bit as well there. And, and what.
That'd be great, because that's, uh, go ahead.
And the site will accommodate, uh, maybe up to a half a dozen people backing up, dropping their load. Uh, and then we stack a couple across, a couple deep, waiting to get in there and taking their addresses down. Um, you know, I count this, I was talking to somebody on the phone, one, one of the council here. It's kind of like, uh, you know, Black Friday of yard waste almost, probably that day. The, the weather was very nice that Saturday and proceeding up to it. Uh, even myself, I'm a little hobbled with my knee, but I was out blowing my leaves into the middle of the yard so I can mulch them up, but, uh, you know, it was just good weather and, and people knew the rain was coming. Maybe that had a lot to do with it, too. I mean, see on this, uh, other chart we provided, how many loads came in, so we far exceeded other weekends on that as well. Um, you know, so I, I don't have a good handle. We haven't done this in the past, so I don't have a good handle on when it's going to drop off. I know Clint got some information, uh, that it will probably drop off in December, is what, uh, our previous contractor had told us, uh, from his data. Now, that, that included probably county residents and commercial operations, et cetera. Uh, but it's, does seem like it could drop off. I mean, depending on how many leaves come down, so.
Yeah, well, whatever we can do to relieve the, um, you know, any backup into that roundabout would be, would be good, just good. I mean, it's such a thoroughfare for that side of town. So much traffic flows through there that has nothing to do at all with the temporary, uh, yard waste site. Uh, my next, final question is just, is from a staffing perspective of, of your employees, do you see anything stopping, um, expanding to full days on Saturday, Sunday? With, with your, your staff that's willing to, to operate the site?
Yeah, that's the thing, uh, you know, that was the other, uh, opt, uh, part of this, is that, you know, we go to extended days on, on the weekends and maybe another day. Uh, I feel like we're probably going to start wearing our staff out a little bit. It sounds like a good idea until you have an event you want to go to, and then, you know, getting three or four people out there. It's good to have a backup, um, you know, so we'll have to have it staffed is the thing, uh, somebody that can operate equipment. And so, you know, we get some weather events in there. I know as, as time goes on in the winter, we typically do kind of wear those, uh, folks out a little bit, uh, with overtime. Uh, not that they don't want to work it, but after a while, it kind of, uh, wears on that, on their bodies, you know, it just does. And, uh, this is one more thing they'll have to do right at that wintertime coming on here. And so that's why I said if, uh, we want to extend them, uh, I'd rather, uh, probably try to get them some help. It could be a hybrid of this situation, but, uh, at least we have some dollars and a contractor we could work with. So if the council wanted to limit it or something like that to a different number, you know, we can work with all of that, but at least we have some backup and we'll limit it to the best we can.
All right, thank you.
Spencer had his hand up. Councilman Mealy?
Yeah, I, I was there at the site right at the time of the backlog, and, um, my concern is Station Four getting a medical emergency at the water, they would not have been able to go through. They'd had to cut through the Knights of Columbus parking lot if they could have gotten to that point to be able to do that. Um, so is there, and I, I mentioned this to our city administrator, Mr. Crane, he hasn't had time to explore this, I know, so, but, um, just for openness, is there an ability where we can work with the water district to use their entrance, cut a path through there to the site and then exit out, uh, where, you know, I think we could get quite a few more vehicles in off the street that way.
We have good relationship with the water company. I would assume they would have let us. It's just, you know, some more, there is a, an inch through there we'll have to work with and more materials and again, it's trying to limit costs with the temporary nature of it all, but we can.
And you staff have done exactly what we've asked. And there, there is no, uh, fault that I can see from, from you all at all. You've done exactly what we've asked of you. Um, you know, Mr. Long, I think, was working that Saturday, Chris Long, I believe, um, talked with him, and I wa- I witnessed him. He was out there working his tail off, trying to get traffic. I mean, he was a traffic cop for forty-five minutes. He put himself at danger, putting himself out in the middle of the street. Fortunately, he had a safety vest on. Uh, but I went up and talked with him and thanked him, because I know that that was not a pleasant experience for him at all. I heard the honking, I heard the cussing through people yelling at him, saying, oh, all kinds of language. Um, and I really appreciated their efforts. And I would love if, if, if we could get a firm commitment from staff to say, I will do it. I will do it every Saturday and every Sunday or whatever. I'm, I'd rather pay our staff. They're deserving of it. I, we just need to have that one hundred percent assurance that it's going to be staffed and manned and ready to go at Sa- at Saturday, you know, Saturday and Sunday, and we need, we really do need to offer a day in the week. Public, and take some of that burden off Saturday and Sunday, so, um, I don't know, I, I, I want to get a sense of relief here for the folks out in the community. We, we've heard them, we're trying to address their concerns. If it would help to pass this resolution with a, with a, a spending mechanism over the cost potentially for the contractor, but if it gives you the time to talk with staff to get commitments, to see what their commitment level is for the next seven weeks. Again, I, I would rather give them the opportunity. I would even be open to say, we worked it. These days, it's a flat, flat amount increase for everybody. That's why it's not based on, on salary. If you do it, I'm just throwing a number out. But, you know, you do.
That's all possible to do, uh, but you just have to work with the city administrator to figure that out. Uh, I guess we also need some direction, uh, on the, on the, during the weekday, if we're going to do that or not as a group.
We need to have a day during the week. We need Saturday to be a full day. I'm fine with leaving Sunday at a half-day. But Wednesday or Friday, full eight hours, and a Saturday, full eight hours is a, is a, is a minimum.
Mr. Crane?
Yeah, so if, if we could, um,
Yeah, so if, if we could, um, get enough authorization for us to do up to thirty-five thousand hybrid model and then work with staff and the contractor to figure out what, what hours we're taking and what hours we're gonna need them to do, if that's an option. Do you feel like that floor amendment covers that?
It does. So it doesn't approve any particular contract. It's essentially a, a spending authority for city administrator.
So if I, if we could get that, I think we could work on schedule and who's doing it on what days or what hours.
But I wanna be able to communicate tonight that we are extending the hours for Saturday and a, and a Friday or Wednesday.
You have to be there?
I, I think we need to-
Uh, so I, you know-
Well, not this week. I know we're not-
Uh, yeah, well, we could this weekend, but, um, um, I think we talked earlier, you know, if the council wanted to vote to have extended hours, then we'd do extended hours. We'd figure out a way to do it.
Councilman Miller.
That would be my preference is, you know, get rid of the spending authority and let you all do your thing that, you know, we had agreed three weeks ago to do and see what you can come up with in terms of some additional hours. You know, I don't know how many additional hours you need on a site that's gonna be open for a month longer, really. Um, you know, I think that's what folks aren't understanding before they publicly comment on social media is. So maybe you'll, you were extended hours, open it up to other, uh, city staff members and see where you are. I mean, heck, I'll, let's say taxpayer's thirty-five grand, I'll go down there and volunteer to do it. I mean, I just think that's too much money. You aren't gonna be able to see this, but I took a photo when I was out there Saturday, and this is where that driveway should've been put in, is that the cedar trees should've been cut down. And it, cut them cedar trees down, you can loop that driveway and it would've held eighteen-twenty vehicles. You know, paying a, a contractor thirty-five grand is not gonna solve what happened third, uh, Saturday morning. The gates were shut, people started lining up prior to it being open. Uh, it was a beautiful day. Like you said, it was just, everything came together. I don't think we're gonna experience that again. We didn't experience Sunday or any other day it's been open. So, um, just kind of a, a fluke there on Saturday. We can apologize to the citizens and let them know that we're giving it our best. In this month, we're, we're being, uh, conscious on our, you know, conscious of our spending and, um, and go from there. But I, I would prefer your team, you know, as a solo entity without spending, uh, without contracting to, to finish this up like we had decided to do.
Mr. Crane, then Councilman Spencer.
My only concern with that is that we wouldn't have the procurement authority in case we start working with our staff this week and find out we've got gaps or inability to cover those hours, then I'm gonna have to wait till December, December fourth to, um, get authorization.
But doesn't section twenty-six A, forty-two A of city code give you that authorization?
Only for twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, and we don't need thirty-five. It's a hybrid type scenario. I mean, that's the whole argument on my end is I don't wanna see twenty-five grand of taxpayer dollars go into a temporary thing that's open for a month. So could we, could you live within that city code, um, allowance there?
I, I, I think we could, but we would only do that with an affirmative vote of the council because the last affirmative vote of the council, this body, was to do it city-run. Um, so without, I, I would never recommend staff do something opposite of the council's previous vote. Well, which is what you're essentially wanting me to do. Um, so that's why I would want some affirmative action from this body before I say-
Well, no, I don't want you to do anything that contradicts. I just want us to uphold to the vote of what we said we'd do, that was city-run it and not spend-
That's right.
Contract additional tax dollars for it.
I, I think that's the concern though, is that without, we, we might not be extending the hours, um, if we don't have somebody to work it.
So we'll sign, let folks sign up and see. I mean, it's, you know.
That's right, but, uh, that's fine, but if we run into next weekend and we don't have enough people to work, uh, we don't have the ability to hire somebody to do that. So you might, you might have a backup again.
All those guys I talked to Saturday were happy to be there, man. They wanna work.
Councilman Spencer.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with trying to come up to a compromise and I appreciate your, your conservative nature of, of wanting to save taxpayer dollars. The problem I have is that a thirty-five thousand dollar investment to make the service better at the risk of potentially someone being in danger from a lack of a response from a fire station less than a block away and they can't head east is, is not a risk that I'm willing to accept. And so therefore, I feel that we need to, uh, address this issue tonight so that we can give staff time to, uh, address the concerns and also that we can communicate to the public that, um, we made these changes. I call for the question.
I don't know that we have any questions. There's not much-
If, if I may, if I may.
Councilman Deacon.
Uh, I would be, I would be hard pressed to be, find that there were not enough young, married men with young children, that their wives wouldn't jump at the chance that their husbands were making, uh, some good money right before Christmas. I think we can more than find enough people. Go ask the wives if they want their husbands to work. They can forget deer hunting is late season. Uh, I'd much rather see our staff being paid well than, uh, go to the contractor. That's, that's what we're gonna give all seasons. I mean, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. So I'm, I'm a firm believer in giving it to the staff. We can find the money, give it to them, even if we have to pay up to the thirty thousand. Give it to the staff rather than going back on contract. Cause these guys work hard for, uh, for a lot of, no recognition. That's my thought.
Councilor List.
So we'd span the hours as been suggested and then we find the demand's not there. Do we have the flexibility, does the administrator have the flexibility to tie it back to, or not? Uh, that's one question I have. Do we have some flexibility related to, to actual demand? The other is, uh, if we do a hybrid, is there some, is there some minimum that, that contractors say they have to have, uh, before they'll even do this? I mean-
I think it's more of a, you know, we, we said, we've communicated them, it's per hours work. And they've given us costs if they had to only work four hours versus six or eight or something like that. And how many men they intend or people they intend to staff at that time in a piece of equipment. So there is some flexibility to work with the contractor to modify this. It, like I said, you're not approving the contract. We've got quotes that, we've got quotes from a contractor and we've, uh, did the math to get to that number. Uh, and, and we think it is the, the high end of the number that we like to give you so you're not surprised by that high end number if it hap, happened to be there. Uh, but like I said, we, we think we can get it down lower. Uh, we can also, I can talk to the city administrator and look for other saving possibilities. Uh, it seems like to me, what I'm confused about after, uh, you know, like, uh, the administrator said, he had some affirmative action that we were going to do for four hours each day on the weekend and that was our last vote, I think. And so I think what I heard was, if you want extended hours, vote on extended hours too. Uh, and then we can work, uh, if people are comfortable with the twenty-five thousand, that's all we're trying. We were just extending that a little further if you wanted full, uh, contractor-led effort. Is that, I'm talking for you, Brian. I'm sorry about that, but, uh-
No, that, that's correct. We, uh, don't have, uh, a real contractual problem. It's more of a council's will and, uh, also the understanding that if we do open it up on the weekdays, that we're pulling our staff away from their other functions. Um, so I think it's important for the council to, to give us some clear direction on, on what they want. Now, obviously, if we do the hybrid approach, we're gonna send out, um, signup sheets for every weekend to see who will work. Uh, I'm sure that we'll get quite a few takers, but I don't know if we'll get enough. And if I don't have that clear authority before December fourth, I got two weekends of potential gaps in trying to expand hours.
Councilman Miller.
Yeah. So the, uh, the issue that arose on Saturday with the cars backed up and presenting a public safety hazard as explained by, uh, Councilman Spencer, that, that would be with city, that would be with contractor, that would be with anybody because the event was that the gates were closed and people start backing in. So if we wanna prevent that, which I think it's a grand idea that we do prevent it, we need to get enforcement out there to do that, you know? You can't, you guys can't just camp out on a road. I mean, you think folks would know that, but they need maybe some enforcement to let them know that they can't do that. So, uh, I, I'm all about giving our staff, we told our staff three weeks ago that we were gonna offer this, for this opportunity and folks have jumped on it and I wanna, I don't wanna see us change that. I wanna see us work within our means. Uh, you know, I've never started in my life, never started a job and three weeks in had to offer help. So I want us to do what we set out to do.
Alright, we've had a lot of discussion. You've got nothing on the table at this point. Is there some action that you would like to propose for staff? Councilman Spencer.
I would propose that we put the original amendment on the floor to give staff that flexibility to be able to staff accordingly. Um-
So you're talking about Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three?
Amendment sheet one. Um, staff was very clear that this was a fluid process, that there would be changes along the way. So I don't think we're diverting too far from what our initial discussions were. So.
You, you're talking about the amendment to what's in the pack?
Yes.
So you're making that as a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You have motion second. Crane.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that the thirty-five grand number was the worst-case scenario number. We're pretty confident that staff's gonna potentially man this, uh, quite a few hours. We just don't know what that number's gonna be once we get the signups done. Um, so I think the more we can maximize staff time and the more we can minimize contractor time, the better that thirty-five thousand dollar number works.
That's a cap, basically, is what we're saying.
Yeah.
And does that roll up the extended hours?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm understanding?
I think that's all included in the resolution, correct?
Correct.
So this first move is just to amend what's in your package. Am I correct, Councilor?
Correct.
So I think all that's addressed in Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three. Is that correct?
Kind of implied, I think. I don't know if it's very specific, but it, it, we base that number on the extended hours.
Correct. All this amendment's doing is adding another ten thousand dollars to that proposal, my understanding.
That is my intent, yes.
To enable you to expand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we leave here and then I can work with this gentleman and get this advertised and that it'd be different hours, e, extended hours, et cetera. And we'll staff it as-
And can you go through the, so they can make sure. Can you tell them the hour-
One more time, please.
We're, we're sorting that out, Councilor.
One more time.
We'll, we'll make, before we vote.
Cause it's, it's, it's implied but not specifically said what hours we're expanding.
Yeah, it's kind of implied, but basically this, you know, the proposal is that we would do a full eight hours on Saturday, four hours Sunday, and eight hours on Wednesday. And there's a couple holidays that we said we would be closed, uh, uh, Christmas Eve, Sunday, and New Year's Eve, Sunday. It's kind of a caveat with all these, that if there's a snow ice event, you know, all bets are off. We've got staff working elsewhere. So that's what the second page just kinda listed all the days out specifically on this chart.
This, this is the motion right here.
Those days.
Those day switches.
Eighteen days, working days on there.
That's the price tag of thirty-five.
Okay. And that includes, that includes Wednesdays?
That included the Wednesday.
This is the worst case scenario.
That document was emailed today?
Uh, yes, Brian emailed, Mr. Crane emailed that out to the council prior to the meeting. Had a memo, had the chart of days and then, uh, the, the floor amendment attached. Three pieces in that email.
Alright, Councilman Deacon, there, there was a document sent out today that changed the number and it's got the dates listed as, that gets to the up to thirty-five thousand dollar figure.
Yeah, I, I saw that. My only concern was I would really hope that when you have the signup sheet, uh, you offer them some better money, uh, cause they could use it and, um, we're still saving money. But it's been a mess from the beginning. Hopefully we can sort it out. Thanks.
Alright, we got a motion second. Councilman Schwartz.
Everybody just, again, back to the facts. Everybody in this body already approved a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. One of this, so all this faux outrage about thirty-five thousand dollars from somebody that didn't even vote for the budget. It's just, I mean, it's astounding. I mean, we've already voted for a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars into this project. We're not gonna spend it all, not even close.
So your motion, Councilor, I just wanna make sure you're moving this amendment to complete document, cause it's not in the one page.
That is correct.
Which has an amendment to Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three.
Correct. With the understanding as City Administrator Bryant and Crane has said and Matt Marash is understanding that we give our staff the opportunity to sign up, but this gives us a route to make sure we fulfill our obligation with extended hours. That's it.
Okay, what you have before you is the document that was sent out. It's an amendment to Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three. So it's gonna be a two-step process. First vote will be to adopt or not adopt that amendment and then you'll be, so I mean, that passes, then you'll be voting on the entire package. Is that clear? As motion. Alright, roll call vote.
Spicer, Wiseman, Wright?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
We have six ayes.
Okay, you have amended Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three. Is there a motion on that complete package?
Motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Wiseman, Wright?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer. We have six ayes.
Okay, so that-
Resolution as opposed is adopted.
You all set there, Mr. Marash?
I believe so.
Thank you. Thank you for all the discussion and debate. I know that we have all received a lot of comments, so I appreciate the comment. That takes us to original item fourteen A, which is Resolution twenty-twenty-three at thirty-one.
The resolution authorizing the city Jefferson to apply for the SFY twenty-twenty-four American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, First Responder Capital Improvements, and Interoperable Communications Equipment Grant.
Chief Wilby.
Thank you. For the past several years, the police department's, uh, been chipping away at a very expensive, uh, project, which is to achieve interoperable communications through handheld and mobile radios, uh, that are interoperable, all band radios, in which we could communicate with other safety agencies. Uh, we've been successful. We have knocked out most of those handheld radios that we need. We're still short about thirty-seven in-car radios with a price tag of around two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. The availability of this grant would allow us to apply for, uh, a portion of that cost. Um, we would be applying for half of the two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand because there is a fifty percent match, uh, if awarded that amount. So we'd like to explore applying for that grant to see if we can knock out a list of that project for in-car. Answer any questions. Answer any questions.
All right, do we, is there any questions first? We have a motion.
You two approve?
Thank you.
Second.
We got a motion second, we need a roll call vote.
Wright?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Wiseman? Resolution's adopted.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, it takes us to item fifteen, presentations from the gallery. We only have one name signed up. Mr. David Taylor. And I think we'll have posted, we've got a three-minute time limit. We're gonna be pretty careful to stick to that, but we appreciate you sticking through the discussion on your voice. So if you'd introduce yourself.
My name is David Taylor, can I ask him something too? So I got three minutes in general.
Ask who?
Public Works. Okay, it don't matter, never mind, never mind, never mind. I, I wanted to ask him something about the Public Works thing that he said. It's okay, though, but um I'm still here seeking resolution for me and my daughter and I'm still here seeking resolution for all minorities. I have, um, it was, it was nine slaves who rode in the boat. It was nine slaves who rode in the boat with their slave master and two gunmen. In the bottom of the boat was the nine slaves. The slaves told the master, they said, "Master, hole in the boat." He told them there was a hole in the boat. The master spit on them, walked past them, paid them no mind, didn't pay them no attention. He came back ten minutes later and he said, "Master, hole in the boat." The master didn't pay him no mind because the master had none, didn't feel like he didn't have nothing to explain to him. So as they traveled down, the hole got bigger and bigger. The master ignored the warning. The hole got bigger and bigger, the master fell asleep with his two gunmen. The slaves got out of the boat through the hole, the hole, as the hole got bigger. The slave owner and his two armed men, they drowned in that same boat because they didn't take heed to the slaves telling them there was a hole in the boat. And Mr. Mayor, I gave, we gave you all warnings, you never replied to none of our complaints, you never replied to none of our grievances, I gave you several, you never replied, you feel like you don't have to reply to us, we're the public, we're the people. And this man the only person who says something about informing the public on anything, on anything. You got, you never informed the public on anything, so that's a hole in the boat. That's, this racial in, inequality, this racial injustice, this racial hierarchy, this is a hole in the boat. Jefferson City, the racial tension and the stuff that's going on, it's a hole in the boat. The, the president at Lincoln University, who's taking those students' money and charging them and not fixing up nothing at Lincoln, getting all that money in the, in the name of our historically black college, that's a hole in the boat. We have no resources for our black kids, that's a hole in the boat. He, he never fixing nothing on our side of town. If you get off on Clark or with an expressway, Clark, there's, it's just one-stop sign, all accidents there. Holes and stuff in the streets, all on Dunklin, that's a hole in the boat. Um, we giving you warnings, y'all guys are not taking heed to our warning because you don't care. If, if there's no compassion for homeless people and less fortunate people, that's a hole in the boat. When you, when you, when you, when you vote against public um library improvements, that's a hole in the boat. But you, you snap for everybody else, you told me there was nothing you can do. I know a lot of mayors, the last mayor was a lady, I don't know if it was the last lady, but she was a lady. She came to our church, she came to our neighborhood, she came to the community functions. Ain't nothing you can do, though, because you can't come, because you don't wanna come out there. There's no speed bumps in ha, public housing. There's no speed bumps in public housing. Oh, you can't go there, we, we redlined, or we redlined, they gave you the paper, you said, you got a paper to work, to work, you know everyone to fix. On, you, you said that earlier, that's a hole in the boat. We tired of this, we, we just, we want some, we want equality. We have nobody who representing us, nobody's representing the people, everything y'all talking about is passing contracts, sir. If you the mayor, you can't never tell the, tell um the people there's nothing you can do about it. I see mayors go on TV and talk and speak every day and say, "We don't condone this in our state, in our city, but a lawsuit would be good with, with the, um, for the public's money, huh? For the taxpayer dollars, huh? If, 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 if a lawsuit come and they, and they open the doors and they see these holes in the boat, they see this racial in, inequality. Y'all not speaking up for us, our kids don't have no resources, Mayor, no resource center. We want our kids to grow up and be somebody like the lady said last time, Mr. Mayor, but there's nothing you can do. You can't give me, you can't give me justice or relief from the Sheriff Department. If, if you can't do nothing, then we need a new captain of this boat. We need a new, we might need a new mayor if you can't do nothing for the people. If all you could do is come in here and pass laws and he the only one who speak up for himself, everybody else agree with everybody else, that's not fair, Mr. Mayor. If nothing you can do, then you shouldn't be our mayor. If you can't help us, you shouldn't be our mayor. If you can't go talk to the Sheriff Department and say, "Hey, what's going on in my, in my city, in my state?" You not the mayor, you shouldn't be our mayor. We need a strong mayor, a man who gonna speak up, God don't like ugly, man. God, whatever you do to the least of God's children, you doing to him. And it don't matter what type of boat and storm we in, because God is my savior and you're not my master. God is my master, but that.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, but then more than generous, I was more than generous last time.
Well, I'm, okay.
Time is up, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
Well, there's some holes in your boat, Mr. Mayor, what are you gonna do about it? And there's nothing you can do, that's what you telling me again on record? Then we gotta get a new mayor? We got no, we got no, we got nobody speaking up for us. What are you gonna do? Okay, what about my, my petitions and my complaints that you never replied to? I got signatures and everything, you didn't reply to those people, you didn't reply to me. What you gonna do, Mr. Mayor? Or there's nothing you can do, again.
This is public comment time, you.
I'm from the public, I pay my taxes.
Exactly, and you've gone way past.
I'm asking you a question now, I'm done talking, I'm gonna ask you a question.
I'm not answering any questions, this is.
You're not answering no questions?
This is public comment time, are you?
You're not answering no questions? I just asked you one question out of the whole thing, what are you gonna do, Mr. Mayor? To patch up these holes in the boat? It's gonna expose all the racism and all the racial hierarchies and the embezzlement and the conflict of interest and the bias, Mr. Mayor. I'm just asking you a question, I pay my taxes, I've been living here before you was the mayor. It was a lady here and she was nice, she wasn't racist. She cared about the people. So what are you gonna do, Mr. Mayor, for African-Americans? You got all these other people in a bad boat because of you. And a lot of these are good people, but it's you, you who can't do nothing for the people, our mayor who's telling us he can't do nothing for the people, there's a lot of holes in the boat. I, we just wanna know what you gonna do, I'm still resigning resolution for me and my daughter, I'm just asking, I'm not hollering. I'm not hollering, I'm just asking, Mr. Mayor, if you can't, if you can't guide this boat, Mr. Mayor, we gonna need a new mayor.
A motion and adjournment, and second, favor say aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.